Do you have something for me to raise?
Good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting called for the purpose of conducting auditor interviews, interviews for the position of auditor. As we normally do, could you please rise and we'll begin our meeting with a prayer and a salute to our flag. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing and all those who are working to transform our city to make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Now please salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clark, could you please call the roll?
Council Leahy. Council Martin.
Here.
Council Mercy.
Here.
Council Melonazzo.
Here.
Council Rourke.
Here.
Council Samaris.
Here.
Council Belanger.
Here.
Mayor Elliott.
Here.
Council Kennedy.
Here.
A present.
A present, as mentioned, this is a special meeting and a city council meeting. I'd like to read the notice that was posted. Notice is hereby given as required by Rule Eight of the City of Lowell City Council. Rules that the Lowell City Council will hold a special meeting of the Lowell City Council in the council chambers on Tuesday, October 27th at 4:00 PM. The purpose of the meeting is to interview three candidates for the position of auditor. The public is invited to attend by order of Rodney M. Elliott, Mayor of the City, and Michael Q. Gary, City Clerk. So with that, we have our first candidate who has joined us here this evening. If you'd just like to come forward, Ms. Wright, and we welcome you to Lowell City Hall. And you can just have a seat right at the table here. Because that's the microphone that you will speak into and you just have to tap that, you can just tap it at the bottom and that'll turn it on and off. With that, as I mentioned earlier, you're more than welcome to make an opening statement and then we'll proceed with a round of questions. We will begin with Council Martin because Council Leahy is absent. And then at the conclusion of the questions, we will, you're more than welcome to make a closing statement. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. Just pull it closer to you.
Better?
Yes.
Okay, super. My name is Linda Wright. I am the Town Accountant in Drakot currently. I've been in the position for just over three years and I'm pleased to be here this evening. Thank you for having me. Does everyone have a copy of my resume? Okay, sorry. Okay, sure.
Yep.
Very good. Does everyone have a copy of my resume?
Yes.
Okay, super.
We have that.
So with that, are you ready to proceed with the questions?
Sure.
Okay, great. Council Martin.
Okay. So Ms. Wright, thank you for coming in, speaking with us this evening. You've outlined your background on the resume, which is impressive, so we appreciate that, and have some related experience in Drakot. So my first question would be, does Drakot use the Munis system?
We have not. We use Softrite.
Okay. Do you have any familiarity with Munis? Have you heard about it, seen demonstrations of it? And that's what we use here.
Yes, I have, but I have not used it personally.
Okay. I mean, do you anticipate it would be an issue with the other systems comparable enough that...
Not at all. I didn't know Softrite when I came to Drakot.
Okay.
And actually, they were in the middle of a reorganization of the Chart of Accounts when the prior accountant left and he didn't quite finish. So I was kind of thrown into the mix where reports weren't working because he didn't completely make everything point properly. So I jumped in with both feet and fixed that for them and got everything working.
So you're able to get that off the ground and up and running even though it was only midstream when you came in?
Absolutely.
How big is the staff that you supervise? Is there any staff or is it just you?
I have one bookkeeper.
Okay.
And then the school is separate. I get the sense that the school falls under the accounting or the auditing department here?
Yes and no. They have their own sort of payroll people and there's a whole separate financial operation, but ultimately the auditor is responsible for signing off on payroll and a whole host of other school functions. So there is a significant administrative staff, however.
Okay, super. Yep, so that's similar where the school department does all their own and then we import their data. Now, when I first came, they were re-entering it by hand, re-keying all the information from expenditures that came over. So I worked with their accounting people, their software people in our software company to create a crosswalk so that we could just import the data and save that resource of time.
And how long ago was that? Was that a recent thing or when you first got there or something?
No, that was probably about a year and so maybe two years ago.
Okay. And it didn't seem to have any issues? It worked out whatever bugs they were?
It worked out smoothly.
Okay.
Luckily, yes.
And what's the budget these days in Drakot? How much is the total...
We're in the low 70s.
Low 70s.
So it's significantly less than...
Okay, but it's...
The general funds.
Right. But it's $70 million that's important to somebody, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. What about in your other prior career as far as supervisory experience? Have you managed other people? How big of a group did you ever manage? What was that like?
Yep, so in the law financial services experience, I worked with smaller businesses and startups. And I was responsible for many different things depending on what the companies needed. My business, best success story is Creative Minds Early Learning Center. They started off in the basement of someone's home and they knew everything they needed to know about running a daycare, but they didn't really understand the business side of it. So I watched them grow from in their basement to four and five different locations. They just recently purchased a building. So I helped them and they don't really need me anymore. So I still provide services like payroll and financial statements at the end of the year for them. But, so I basically trained them and helped them grow from novice to doing everything on their own.
Okay. What about at WR Grace, the work you did there was, did any people report to you there?
No.
You were just responsible for your own product line?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
So hands-on, right now I have one bookkeeper that reports to me.
Okay. And you talked about how you interface with the school department in Drakot. What about other departments? Those all fall under you, I take it?
Yeah, everything runs through our department, yes.
Okay. I think that's it for me, Mr. Mayor. I'll leave. I have some other questions that I know other councillors want to ask, so I'll defer.
Yeah, absolutely. We try to share. When you go first, you can ask all the questions, but I'm last, so I won't have anything to... Actually, Council Kennedy is last. So with that, then Council Martin, we'll now turn it over to Council Rena Mercy.
Yes, yes. Good afternoon, Ms. Wright. Nice to meet you. And you live in Drakot, so you worked in Drakot or you still work in Drakot. My number one question was, are you familiar with Munis? It was already asked and you're not familiar with it. Do you think that if we hired you, you would be able to adapt to it fairly quickly because it's very important of a system, financial management system here?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Absolutely.
All right. Are you familiar with end-of-the-year system closings?
Yes.
You are. Are you a CPA?
I'm not a CPA. I have an MBA.
Have you had a chance to look at our city budget at all?
Yes. Your website is very impressive.
Yes.
Anything and everything you want to know can be found.
And I was impressed by seeing that you're familiar with UMass, and I don't mean UMass Lowell, I mean the Uniform Municipal Accounting System. In your resume, you have that.
Yes.
Are you familiar with our Plan E farmer government?
Can you clarify that?
Well, in the Plan E farmer government, who did you report to as the auditor there in Drakot? Who did you report to? Anybody? The manager? The town manager?
I work with the town manager, but I report, like on the org chart, I report to the selectmen.
You report to the selectmen and you would do that here as a, you would report to the council?
Okay.
Are you familiar with the preparation of Schedule A?
Yes, I am.
The recap submittals?
Yes.
Schedule of transfers?
Yes.
Free cash reports and calculations. You're familiar with that?
Yes, I am.
Multiple reports for the Department of Revenue. You got along fairly well with the Department of Revenue?
Absolutely.
Okay. If I was to ask you, what is the greatest quality that you would bring to this job? What would that be?
A positive attitude and a can-do attitude.
Positive attitude?
Yes.
And what was the rest?
A can-do attitude.
A can-do attitude?
Yes.
That's fine. That's all the questions I have now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Melonazzo.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Ms. Wright. To follow up on Council Mercy's last question, how do you feel your background relates to the city auditor's position here in Lowell?
Well, I think the town accountant position is pretty much meritous except for the cities have different innuendos and different laws that apply.
Okay, okay.
I think I would feel comfortable making the transition.
You probably know by visiting the website that the city has a number of enterprise funds. Are you familiar with enterprise funds and how they work?
Yes, we have two in Drakot.
You do, okay.
Yes.
And how often do they get reconciled in Drakot?
Monthly.
Monthly, okay. Thank you. Are you comfortable processing payroll?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I think we're on, are we on a bi-weekly payroll now? I probably should know that. No, no, we're not. Okay, okay. So it's quite obviously intensive from the standpoint of getting it done in a timely manner. And you'd be comfortable doing that and making sure that that obviously gets done?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned the Chart of Accounts in Drakot. We have literally hundreds of Chart of Accounts here in the city. How do you think your first 30 days will be here, working in the auditor's office, just getting kind of your arms around how, I guess, integral or complicated it is here in the auditor's office?
Yep, so I guess I would have to get to know the staff, see what their strengths and weaknesses are or what they feel their positives and negatives are in the department where there are, you know, need for improvement. I'd obviously jump right into the chart and try and familiarize myself with the different types of funds and what you have running through them.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Are you familiar with the various federal and state programs that I'm sure the town of Drakot, you know, has taken advantage of some state monies and obviously from the standpoint of school reimbursement and infrastructure reimbursement? So you're familiar with federal and state programs and...
Yes.
Okay. And how the auditor's office would actually monitor those, especially, we get quarterly reports from the auditor's offices to where we are on each line item in the budget. Is that something that you would continue to provide to the council?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my last question has to do with the difference between an internal audit and a performance audit. Have you been involved in both types of audits in the past?
Yes.
Okay. Who's the audit firm that town of Drakot uses?
We have Melantzen Heath.
Melantzen, okay, okay, okay. Great, thank you. I'm all set, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Melonazzo. Council Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Wright, thank you for coming in. Just a general question. How familiar are you with the city of Lowell?
Depends on what, I mean...
Have you been through the city? Have you come here before?
Yes.
You know, work history, anything like that, the opinion here in the past?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Right. And as you said before, do you have a similar relationship in Drakot as you would the auditor there as you would here in Lowell? How do you see yourself fitting into the overall finance team in Lowell while maintaining independence as our auditor?
I don't think it's a difficult task.
And you have any specific relationships with the staff at the Department of Revenue? Is there a relationship there that you go to, you know, and the reports and so forth?
Yes, we have Amy Handfield. I'm not sure who your representative would be, but we have a great relationship.
And that's over the past three or four years?
Three years, yep.
Okay. And you were saying before, you've been involved in preparing financial reports such as the basic financial statements and the comprehensive financial reports for Drakot?
Actually, we don't have, I think they refer to that as the CAFR. We don't, we're not involved in that. That's something that's on the wish list, but we haven't gone there yet.
Are you familiar with that at all, how that works?
Just familiar with it. I don't have hands-on experience, but again, I think it wouldn't be anything too difficult to pursue.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Rourke. Council Samaris.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in for an interview, Ms. Wright. My first question, how would you describe your ability to work with other departments? Because although you're going to be an independent auditor, you know, you still have to work with the various departments in this city.
Yes. I get along with everyone very well.
Okay. How would you describe your ability to collaborate? It's one thing to get along with people, but there is an issue dealing with collaboration to make things work. How would you describe that?
Like everyone trying to be on board, same, part of the same team?
Okay, at times the auditor has to be the bad guy.
Sorry.
Bottom of city life. Okay, at times the auditor has to be the bad guy to ensure that departments follow the law, okay? And also, you may have to make suggestions that in some sense, some department heads will say, we've done it this way for many years. Why do I have to change or why do we have to change? How do you handle those type of situations?
Actually, I think that's just part of the culture. I've run into that in Drakot and you just have to take, you know, baby steps or walk around from a different angle or show them why it would be better to do it the other way, just so that everybody can buy into it.
Okay. But if I still refuse, if I'm just not cooperative the way I should be and I just don't want to change?
Yeah.
And somebody has to, you know, will say, close it off. How do you feel about that? Can you do it?
If that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do.
Okay. Your knowledge of Chapter 44, Finance Statues, Department of Review and Guidelines, your familiarity with those?
Yes.
Okay. But there's also constant change going on regarding statutes and codes and what have you and regulations with the state. How do you keep up with these type of changes? Because they're constant. You have to do your job, you know, which is a great deal of responsibility at the same time, teaching yourself and, you know, find out what's going on to make sure that you're ahead of the curve. So how do you go about doing something like that?
I've been trying to attend as many meetings as I can related to the municipal accountants and auditors. And I subscribe to some of the newsletters and I just try and network as well. Just you pick things up when you have conversations or hear other conversations.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Samaris. So we're going to continue to go in alphabetical order and Council Belanger is at the top of that list, so Council Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Wright, thank you for your interest in the city of Lowell and we welcome you to City Hall.
I really don't know much to add. My colleagues before me asked some outstanding questions, but as Council Mercy alluded to, you know you will work directly for the city council and this position would be a three-year appointment and you would need to get reappointed in three years from the city council. Is that something you're comfortable with going into it?
Sure.
Okay, that's great. Well, my only, you know, my only concern is here is, you know, Drakot, it's our neighbor, but the budget's far less. You know, we're nearly five times as much as the Drakot budget. What do you see as a challenge then? Is that something, you see anything that, any barriers that might be in your way? Is this...
I don't think so. I think I view it as it's the same concept and the same procedures. It's just bigger numbers.
Just more zeros, huh? Okay.
Yeah. What's in a zero?
Okay, all right. Well, I have really nothing more to add. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, Ms. Wright, for expressing interest in the position. So I wanted to ask you, you know, are there specific reports that you provide to the Board of Selectmen or to the town manager on a regular basis? And if so, what some of those reports might be?
I think the biggest thing that needs to be reviewed would maybe be expense and revenues variance analysis so that you can see if you're on track.
Right.
Probably a year maybe. I don't know what reports are you used to receiving.
Well, yeah, I think that you answered my question. I think it's just good to know where we are financially on a regular basis, whether it's quarterly. We're not looking for monthly reports, but particularly when there are some very tight times, where are we at? What revenues, what receipts are coming in on target and which ones are not. So I do think that's important, but is that something that you produce and who do you produce it for? Is it for the manager or for the Board of Selectmen?
I have been producing it. We have another layer, the finance director kind of takes that on, so we would sit and review it and then she would meet with the manager to review it.
Okay, so it's somewhat of a similar, somewhat of a similar approach where you work as a team while you are independent and you're hired and report to the council. You do work in conjunction with the finance officer and the town manager to ensure that things are going okay. All right. So we have many contracts in the city. We have many unions. I'm talking about contracts with our unions, I should say, collective bargaining agreements. Do you have many of those in Drakot? And are you responsible or who's responsible for interpreting the language when it comes to, I'll say, overtime and, you know, just work schedules and, you know, cost of living and those types? I think we ran into a little situation. What is, what's your approach to interpreting those?
It would depend on the situation because different departments wear different hats. We don't have as many people.
Right.
So we can't really be as focused. So it would depend on the situation, but I would, if I couldn't interpret it myself, I would reach out to whoever would be the relevant person.
Okay.
I actually just created a database because it seemed like we didn't have as good control on it as we should. So I created a database where we scan everything, all the contracts in, and we can just do a sort and figure out when a contract is coming up for review or renewal. So we have our hands around it a little bit better.
Okay. That's actually pretty interesting. So everything is consolidated in one particular area, so when it's time to interpret and it's time to enter that data into the system, that it's interpreted appropriately or accurately, I should say.
Correct.
Okay. So on an annual, not an annual basis, but we do have an independent annual audit required by law. And our prior auditor did a, I know it's not required by law to go out for solicitation, but is that something, what's your thoughts on selecting an independent auditor?
So I guess we'd have to determine the parameters and put together a request for proposal and reach out to the auditors that are experienced in municipal auditing.
Okay, would you do that annually, semi, I mean annually or every other year or what would be your thought on hiring an auditor?
I'm not sure I'd do it that frequently. I think you don't necessarily, if you find, it depends on where you are. So in Drakot, cost is a big factor. And the last time they went out, I think they chose the lowest bid.
Okay.
And if you had a low bid and then the next level up was a huge gap and you just really couldn't afford it, one of the fixes to that issue would be you could just change the audit team. So you wouldn't have to necessarily go to a different company, just have a different set of eyes looking at it.
Okay. All right, so that was, that's clearly one of the issues is the cost of this annual audit and that's something that you've looked at and you've had experience with trying to get the lowest, the lowest cost, maybe over a two-year period or a three-year period. Did you sign a one-year, two-year, three-year with your audit firm?
We do it annually, but we don't go out to bid that frequently.
Okay. I know there are still several other councils that have questions, but I, what would you say the challenges of the job in Drakot were? In addition to this, the day-to-day...
Yeah, I don't really...
The day-to-day responsibilities.
The chart, changing the chart of accounts, making all the reports work, that was a challenge, but...
So when you went there, you had to reconstruct or revamp the chart of accounts?
Yeah, so they were in the middle of it, but the reports, everything wasn't pointing correctly for the reports to work.
Okay. Because that was an issue a few years ago, I suppose, and I believe the last auditor continued to try to, try to refine and try to eliminate some of the chart of accounts that were just including some of the, you know, because of some of the revenue funds and we're just trying to get a better chart of accounts. So that's, that's good to know. So with that, I will relinquish the mic to Council Kennedy. Council Kennedy? Thank you, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Ms. Wright. You're getting to the end. There's only me and one other and I think that'll be it. On your resume, it indicates that you've been the town accountant since 2012, but then right below that, there's LAW Financial Services, which I'm assuming is a, like a doing business as or a small consulting company that you run as well?
Yes.
Do you still do that? Do you do both things simultaneously?
I do. I've scaled back quite a bit. I primarily provide on a continual basis payroll services for about 14 companies. And then I have a handful of companies that I will do financial statement preparation for and bank presentations if they need to get loans or other things. So it's not, I do that after hours.
Yes.
And on the weekends, so it doesn't conflict.
How many hours do you think that entails on the average, on a weekly or a monthly basis?
It's more, on a weekly basis, I'd say maybe two hours and then for the payroll piece of it. And then it depends monthly and quarterly, depending on the needs of the customers. I don't know, 10 more hours a month.
Okay. Is that something that you would continue to do? If you were the successful candidate here, would you expect to do that or would it be that you'd see how that worked out for you and whether, what are your plans on that?
I'd like to keep it, but if, I'd have to really see what the stresses of this job would be. I noticed that there may be some meetings that I would have to attend evenings. I'd like to get a little bit more information about that and then I'd have to weigh it out.
It's the council meetings on Tuesday.
Okay.
And probably the budget hearings that would be, and there might be other meetings that I don't know about, but that would be, those would be the meetings. The position that you hold now with the town, was that, were you appointed? Is that a, do you have a term on that?
It's a three-year appointment, but it never was revisited. So I think it's open-ended at this point.
Okay. And did you say earlier that you directly report to the Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
And so, and so does the Town Manager reports directly to the Board of Selectmen?
Correct.
Does anybody else? Just the two of you?
I believe it's just the two of us.
Okay. And so you mentioned earlier, too, I think, that there was a Financial Manager?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the title?
Yes.
Does that person work directly for the Town Manager?
She does.
She does. Okay. And how would that position be different from your position?
I think she works more on project-type things. She's actually the Assistant Town Manager now, but she's, she was prior to that, the Treasurer slash Finance Director. So she takes on the Treasury role, so that would have to do with bonding and other things. So she's busy with that stuff.
Okay. Your Assistant Town Manager just retired, right?
Yeah.
Last month or a couple of months ago or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. And so do you also have, in the town, there's also, is there a Finance Committee?
Yes.
For Town Meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And they report to Town Meeting. And so how do you interact with them? How does that relationship all work out?
So we start the budget process in November. And I think around January is, we'll start having, once we have the numbers pulled together from the departments, we'll do a presentation to the Finance Committee. We meet Monday evenings, probably for a few months. We also have the capital planning that we have to incorporate into that. So we work right up, we have our June Town Meeting is when everything's finalized. But we meet with them weekly just to go over line item by line item what we have in our budget.
Okay. And the Finance Committee, they report directly to Town Meeting?
Yes.
That's how that works?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you would just, so how do you work with them?
Well, recently, more recently, we've created a budget task force. But prior, that's just recently, in the last four months, maybe. Prior to that, though, January through June really is the most focused that we have with them.
Okay. But would you meet with them, say, monthly? Or do you go to their meetings? Or how does that?
Oh, yes. The Finance Committee, yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay. So you are independent, though, of the Town Manager there?
Mm-hmm.
And you work directly for the Selectmen?
Correct.
Okay. And if you were successful with this job, where would, when would you be able to start? How long would it take before you could come on board?
I'd have to ask. I'd have to find out and see what was reasonable. Obviously, you're looking to fill the position soon, sooner rather than later, I would assume. So I'd figure out what your needs were and then go back and see how we could work it out with the least impact.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have Council Leahy and then a follow-up from Councila Martin.
Okay, great.
Council Leahy?
Thank you for being here. So in Drakett, how many people are in your office?
Myself and a bookkeeper.
You're in the book, okay. And... I just had a couple of concerns about your financial services, too. So if you are successful here, and how would you assess your time demands? So if you find, I would assume this is going to be more demanding than Drakett with the budget. So how would you take a look at that?
I do have someone that helps me process the payrolls. I'm sure that she could take a piece of the business if I needed to let go of everything and unwind it. And then I have a company in Methuen that I work with that has taken on the tax preparation of the clients that I have, and they offer other services that, as far as the financial statement preparation goes. And I'm sure they would be willing to take on the remaining customers.
Okay. Because we'll be, we usually start our budget, you know, around April, May, and we have deliberations in June.
Okay.
And when you were asking about the meetings, so we have meetings every Tuesday night, except for June, July, August, September, it's every other week.
Okay.
And then I guess, so why Lowell? Why did you, what appeals to you to come to Lowell?
I thought it was a good opportunity. It would be career advancement, and it just seems like everybody is, it just seems like a very professional environment. I looked at the website and I was very impressed.
All right. And how long have you been in Drakett since?
Just over three years.
Three years, okay. In your last employment, you were with W R Grace?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And as we said, it's a three-year appointment. And then, you know, we were looking for some stability, at least I am. So do you think you'd be, you're not here yet, but do you think this would be a good place to stay for a while?
I would like a long-term commitment. Yes, that would be great.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Leahy. Council Martin?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up, if I could. So you mentioned that Melanson and Heath are the outside auditors in Drakett?
Yes.
And have they, have they issued a management letter every year? Or have there been, I guess my question, have there been significant issues in any of the management letters? Or have there been things you've been able to clean up from management letters? Or there been issues that are identified that you've solved? Or, you know, if you could talk about that process or what it's been like in Drakett? If I could just, here, for example, we had a number of man, open items that went back a number of years, and we had recent auditors start to chip away at those. And so now there are fewer findings than we used to have in the past. And I'm curious as to what your experience has been with anything comparable to that?
Yep. They have had comments. A couple of them were carried forward. But I think they're minor things and easily fixable. One of them had to do with the Gatsby 64, I think it is. So we were just waiting for guidance from them as to how they wanted to move forward that. So that's carried forward. We had some IT issues. They were trying to separate duties, I guess, and create more secure environment. And I think, we haven't gotten it this year. We are wrapping up the audit now for '15. So I'm not sure. I haven't heard anything from them yet regarding what they may have on that management letter this year.
Okay. But you're familiar with that process and have worked to improve things as that have been identified?
Yes.
Okay.
I actually did notice your management letter on the website. And one of the comments was something about the grant funds.
Right. Yeah, I think there were some issues identified.
Yeah. Do you know if they've been able to work or was it the transition they didn't really have time to?
I don't know where that stands, to be honest with you.
Okay. Is it typical for things to be carried forward?
Not as much as in the past, but it wouldn't be unusual for things to be a prior year finding that just didn't get addressed. If there were a number of them, you know, you'd obviously take the more significant ones. And so some that were not that big of an issue might get carried over for, from year to year in the letter. So that has happened here in the past. We don't, we prefer that not be the case, but it does happen.
Yeah. Okay.
So, all right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. We have a couple more follow-up questions, Ms. Wright. First from Council Mercer, then Council Rock.
Yes. Thank you very much. Sorry I didn't say this first. What do you see your role as it is applied to your relationship with the Treasurer's Office?
Hopefully, it's a collaborative role. We do need to work closely together to make sure the accounts tie out. Oh, that was another thing I noticed in one of, some of the research, I'm not really sure where, that there were some places where they could, you know, clear up some, some of their functions.
I'm very concerned that this position that someone would hold, because we are responsible and you relate to us and we relate to you, that you put everything you have into this department. And I know that it's none of my business what you do on the weekend. That's your business.
Sure.
But so, the manager, City Manager works for us, too. And he is an attorney, and he had outside interests where he was doing legal work. And we asked him if he would give that up, and he did, because this is a very strenuous job, and we need someone to focus on this position. I have that same attitude with the City Clerk and the City Auditor.
Okay.
That's, I don't care what you do on the weekend, but I want a person that's going to be full-time here and not be exhausted because they have another job elsewhere.
Sure.
Because, you know, I know that it's tough to come here to work every day, but we have a Tuesday City Council meeting from 6:30, could go anywhere for an hour to 10 o'clock at night. And that's once a week, starting until the summer. So I don't appreciate, I know your life is your own, but I want a commitment from someone that they're going to give their all to this department. That's only the message that I'm just saying. Thank you.
Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Rock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief, Ms. Wright. In your time in Drakett, did you ever notice whether your monthly reports or your year-end reports, have you noticed any inaccuracies in any type of department specifically? Or any situation where you had to conduct an investigation into a certain department in Drakett?
We've had situations that needed to be researched.
And how would you, how would you start that? How would you finish it? How would you solve the problem?
Well, it's kind of easy because I use the auditors as a scapegoat. You know, I can just say, I need to research this so that I have an answer for the auditors if they should ask. And I haven't really gotten much kickback from that, so it's worked okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members? Council Kennedy?
Just one more. You know, maybe there's nothing. I guess during your time, aside, you mentioned that when you first started, there were loose ends and so forth that you had to kind of put together when you started your job. But during the three-year time that you've been there, the three years, has there been a special challenge that was, that was really hard for you? You know, something that you really thought was tough? And then, and if there was, how did you handle that? And maybe there wasn't one. So it isn't like you got to come up with one if there isn't one. But I would be interested in how that worked out for you if there was one.
Actually, hearing the question again, something just popped in my mind. The Schedule A, the first time that I did it, I had no idea what I was doing. I tried to go back and follow what they had done before, and it was very challenging. I worked my way through it, many late nights. But this past year, I was just able to try and tackle it, and I reprogrammed our accounting system so that I could point the accounts to certain lines within the system. So for the balance sheet side of it, for the free cash, I was able to have a report spit right out for me so that I didn't have to rekey everything. They're, I don't know if it's archaic, but people are just used to doing things the same way all the time. So they would just print reports out and then rekey everything into Excel, and it's such a waste of time. So I got the system to do it for us, and I can use that. I use it for the free cash, and I'm also hoping to have that completed, if I was around, by the end of next season so that I could have it spit out for the Schedule A as well. It just saves time.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. I think that concludes our questions. If you are more than welcome, and we'd invite you to make your closing statement if you'd like.
Okay. I appreciate you having me here. I'm very excited about the opportunity, and I take seriously what your concerns were about working outside and having a side job. I will definitely consider that if provided the opportunity. And just thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay, we've asked, we've asked Mayor Calery to bring down our next candidate, please. Just waiting in the mayor's reception room. Next candidate is Mr. Ferrari. Awkward. Good evening. Welcome to Lowell City Hall, the City Council Chambers. If you would like to just join us right here at this table, and I'm going to join my colleagues down in the well after we proceed. Nice to meet you. I'm Rodney Elliott. Nice to meet you, Mr. Ferrari. So if you'd like to have a seat, we would invite you to, if you would like to make an opening statement, we will proceed with questions from each individual member of the City Council. And maybe in some cases, there might be a follow-up question or two. And then we would invite you to a closing statement. So with that, Mr. Ferrari?
Sure. Maybe this is a little bit better. I really didn't have an opening statement prepared. I'm sorry for that. I, you know, I don't know what you really want to know. I'm just going to throw it out to the crowd. And just, please don't ask me to remember names. It's going to be kind of tough, so.
That's okay. We wouldn't ask you to do that. That's why we put them on our desk. So no, no, that's fine. We're just, you're welcome to make a statement. But if not, we will go right to the questions. And this time, Mr. Clerk, who are we going with?
We started with Council Martin last time.
Okay. So why don't we proceed with Council Mercer? Sorry, Council Leahy, we know that you're tied up.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mr. Ferrari. I wish I had one.
So do I. So do I. I may not be here if I did.
I see on your resume that it says that you are the City Auditor in Gardner to the present. Is that right?
Actually, I just resigned. There were some personal issues at home, aging parents. I won't get into that aspect of things. My mom passed away. My dad is a little bit of dementia. Doesn't realize if he had breakfast or not. He remembers Little League from 35 years ago. You know, it's unfortunate we're dealing with that. And the city dynamics in Gardner was such that I sensed a lot of infighting within the City Council. I think we had nine, 11 councilors. Two were going to run for mayor. Three were suing the city. It was just, it was kind of an uproar. And that combined with what I was dealing with at home led me to just resign recently.
So there's a lot of turmoil in your life then? Is this what we're?
Not right now. Actually, we straightened out the thing with my dad, thank God. My brother has him. We were going to take him at my house. He didn't want to leave the house, but he's, we're, we're good now.
So at the time that you were the City Auditor of Gardner, were you also the Town Accountant of Royalston at the same time?
Yes. I took Royalston, I was working in Athol. Athol and Royalston are neighboring communities. Royalston is strictly, if you want to call it my weekend warrior position. It's part-time. It's, it opened up when I was in Athol. You know, we're only seven miles away. Why not? It's strictly part-time.
Well, I'm of the belief that if you're the City Auditor in the city of Lowell, that's what I'd want you to focus on and not extracurricular jobs here, there, and everywhere. That's just strictly my opinion.
Certainly.
Have you ever been to Lowell before?
Yes, and actually had to go and fight a speeding ticket, but we'll leave it at that.
Okay. That's a lot of information, but that's, you're being honest. Thank you. Are you a CPA?
No, I am not.
Are you familiar with our city budget?
Yeah, I looked at it online. 350 million, give or take.
Yes. Now, you live in Athol?
Yes.
Which is 53.9 miles away from the city?
Give or take, yeah, about 50.
So would you, if you got this job, you would be commuting back and forth over 100 miles a day?
Sure. I, when I worked for Digital Equipment, which is, it started as digital. It became compact. It's Hewlett-Packard. That was in Andover. That was a 62-mile round trip, 62-mile one-way trip, I'm sorry.
Do you have any experience with qualified borrowing?
No, I do not. I'm sorry.
Retirement law?
Yes.
Financial forecasting?
Yes.
Schedule A?
Yes.
You realize that you would work. Are you familiar with the planning, farmer, government at all?
The, excuse me?
Well, who do you report to when you were the Town Auditor in Gardner? Who did you report to the?
The City Council was my direct hire. Reported to them dotted line. Reported to them, dotted line, day-to-day operations to the mayor.
Right, and you would do that here under the planning, farmer government, right? Okay.
Yes.
Did you have to go to the selectmen meeting at all when you were in Gardner?
Uh, not the select, I'd go to city council meetings on, on occasion, but I've gone to selectmen meetings in Pepperell and in Athol.
And you would have to in Lowell as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a necessary, I don't wanna say necessary evil, but it's part of the job.
So there's nothing about this resume that you'd wanna change at all, right?
No, everything checks out, to my knowledge.
Okay, that's fine. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mercer. We'll move on to Council Malanazo.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Ferrari. Thank you for being here. Are you familiar with the Munis system?
Yes, Gardner used Munis. It was, I was kinda thrown into it. When I started in Gardner, the prior auditor had left in October. So I started late February, last week in February, I'm gonna call it the beginning of March, and it was just kinda, turned on the computer, it was welcome new user. Surprise. And it was, I'm, I'll be honest with you, the first three months were hacking around that system. It's, it's pretty complex. Gardner used it for the accounting system. We used it for human resources. We used it for payroll. We were on an outdated version. That's, that was part of the problem. Gardner was, I think there's like version 11, we were on 9.
Okay.
So.
But you ended up getting comfortable with the system?
Yes, yes.
How many child of accounts did you have in the town of Gardner?
Oh, God. We had probably, I'm guessing, 15, 16 different funds. And in those funds, we probably had 600 different accounts that were in use. We had many, many, many more that were, I'll say obsolete. We had to leave them, we had to inactivate them in case we ever had to go back and get history. You couldn't just delete them.
Okay. Now, you mentioned reporting, uh, going to the town council in Gardner. This position requires that you be here during our regular sessions, which are every Tuesday night, and then on the summer schedule, we go the second and fourth Tuesdays. So would that be an issue for you?
No.
Being at the council meetings on Tuesdays, okay. How would you suggest that your background really does relate to this position? Being a $350 million budget, having a number of employees that you'd be responsible for, doing weekly payroll, which is not an easy task when it's still on a weekly basis?
Was it weekly?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
How do you feel your background would relate to the position?
It's pretty much Gardner on a larger scale. I, I kinda, I got into municipal accounting on a, I don't wanna say on a whim, but when Compaq, Hewlett-Packard, Digital, I assumed the town accountant's position in Athol, and it's just been a natural, natural progression. We use different systems. Athol was much smaller. Pepperell was about the same size, but for lack of a better term, much wealthier than Athol was. And I left Pepperell, went to Gardner, and Gardner is just, oh, probably a $65 million budget, including the schools. Lowell is much larger. I'll be honest, the trouble, I don't wanna say trouble, the most, always had a look at the school budget in, in Gardner. It was kinda hands-off. Here it is, here are the numbers, you make 'em work.
Yep.
Great. You, you know, you did your budget, but I gotta make 'em work?
Okay. One last question. Are you familiar with enterprise funds? We have a number of enterprise funds.
Enterprise funds, yes. We had, we had five in Gardner, and I don't know why we had five. One was a landfill cap, which I don't understand, but we've done, we've, I'm familiar with water, sewer. What else? We have water, sewer, transfer station, and let's see, we have landfill? I thought there was one more. I can't even think of it now.
Okay.
But I'm familiar with the enterprise funds, yes.
Okay.
Actually, they're, I find them a little bit easier.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ferrari.
Council Malanazo, move on to Council Roark.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ferrari, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
How do you see yourself fitting into the overall finance team of the CLO while maintaining independence, working for the council?
It's a tough line to walk. I, you know, it's, I like to think that the council sets direction, of which I do. The mayor does the day-to-day operations of the city. If there is a conflict, I'm, I'm one to sit down with, whether it's the finance committee of city council and the mayor, and, you know, work things out ahead of time so it doesn't reach a, what do you, come to a head, let's put it that way.
Right. And then at your time as either chief financial officer or as the other accountant of, with Pepperell, Royalston, or Gardner, it was as 2011?
Uh, yeah.
Is there any point in time where you found discrepancies or irregularities in budgets or in reports?
In, believe it or not, it wasn't that way in Gardner. The mayor, Mayor Mark Hawke is a pretty sharp individual. He was a pleasure to work with. I did have a little issue in Athol where the town manager at the time was new, and he wanted to take, take the budget, his own budget, submit it, and when it came down to it, we, he didn't want to realize that he double-counted revenues, and we were on a much smaller scale, $150,000 to the bad. We couldn't set our tax rate. That was going to the board of selectmen and him. I mean, unfortunately, it reached that level. We had to sit down and, you know, hack it out.
So how'd you, so you find something was wrong? How did you address it? How did you find it out? I guess, number one. And then did you go to the, to the selectmen and the council? How did you rectify the problem?
I went directly to the mayor for, I mean, I'm sorry, the mayor, the town manager at the time. I went directly to him, and he was adamant that he didn't count, double-count revenues. My comment was, DOR, Department of Revenue, says we did double-count revenues. Adamant, we didn't. At that point, I went to the chairman of the board of selectmen and just said, we've gotta have a meeting. We cannot set our tax rate. We're gonna have to do short-term borrowing or something to come up with $150,000 in revenue, make some cuts. At which point, we had a, a meeting, and actually, DOR was on the phone with us. When he heard it from DOR as opposed to me, well, we started cutting budgets, let's put it that way.
So do you have a contact process with the DOR? Is that something that you've used in the past that you've maintained a relationship with going forward?
Uh, yeah, there's, each, Department of Revenue has been downsized tremendously, but Athol used Springfield, Pepperell, and Gardner both used Worcester. I imagine Lowell would probably use Boston? I, I, you know, just a guess, I, I don't know. But I know a few people, let's put it this way, not personally, but phone conversations in Department of Revenue all over the state.
If there's an answer, a question you need answered, you'd be able to make a quick phone call to somebody over there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Roark. Council Smarres.
Thank you, and welcome to Lowell, Mr. Ferrari.
Thank you.
Okay, my first question. How would you describe your ability to work with other departments? Athol's small, but the thing is probably more individuals than groups, but how would you describe that?
I'm not gonna profess to know their department in and out. I wanna know the numbers on their department. I wanna know revenues. I wanna know expenses. I wanna look at things that are out of line. As far as me, you know, with the DPW head, I don't, I mean, I, I know a little bit about Chapter 90, but I don't know what roads he wants to pave. I look at them as the boss of their department. It would be my job to be the watchdog, a fiscal watchdog for the department.
Okay, understanding that, but even, even if you don't know what their functions really are, you know the money. I mean, do you see yourself working collaboratively with them to?
Oh, by all means. I think it's a relationship that has to be established of, I like to, I'm gonna say, make suggestions. I'm not gonna go in there and turn things upside down. If I see something that looks a little bit, I, maybe I don't understand it, maybe it's not a miss, I'm gonna say I don't understand it. Open line of, you know, call me anytime. Call me day, night, it doesn't matter. I'm open, door is always open. Working with people is, I consider myself a people person. I can talk to most anybody. My wife hates it sometimes when we're out, but, you know, I, I can talk to anybody pretty much about anything.
No, you'll find this council as a whole, I mean, you know, really wanting to see collaboration. But at the same time, wanting to see collaboration, the auditor sometimes has to be the bad guy. Now, at some point, you may be working in the, let's see, that department you were talking about, or any department you'd wanna talk about or deal with, might have their own way of doing things, and might be reluctant to listen to you make the change. How do you deal with someone that might not be willing to listen? Not your report, but the thing is, you still have to your job. That's what we expect of you.
There's a little bit of give and take. If I can find, you know, maybe I have to do something a little bit different, yet they're gonna have to do something a little bit different. It's not gonna be, I just go in there and say, hey, this is how it's done, end of conversation. If I have a legal leg to stand on, i.e. Department of Revenue says you count revenues this way in an enterprise fund, that's what it is, here's how you set your overhead cost, that's what we're taking.
All right, so you differentiate from, this is the law, this is what you have to do, or this is the regulation, as opposed to if you had some leeway, you'd work with the person?
Yes, yes. I mean, they may have to change something, I may have to change something. I'm not gonna try to create work for them, nor am I gonna create work for myself. I'm gonna try to make things simpler.
Okay, your knowledge of Chapter 44, general finance statutes, Department of Revenue guidelines in general, how are you with that?
44 is, it's, you know, pretty, pretty straightforward. I have that, I think the color of the book is red now. It changes every year. It goes from black to green to blue to red. It's red now, so, is that the book right there? Yes, it is.[1412.62][1412.65][laughing] You know, the duties of a town accountant slash city auditor, authorizing payroll, treasurer cannot, it's a, what do you wanna say? Check and balance there. I can tell the treasurer to cut a check, how's that work? Treasurer can cut a check if she wants, but if I don't sign it, it doesn't get paid. You know, signing the warrants, things like that. I've signed warrants under duress, under one or two items that I didn't agree with. I'm not gonna hold up the whole warrant, but I am gonna note on the warrant that I don't necessarily agree with this. On that, in those cases, we have cut the check and held the check until it's been resolved. It's easier to void a check than it is to send it out and try to get it back.
Well, I mean, I think this is something the city council would expect you to do. I mean, that's the hard part of being the auditor. And sometimes, we call the term bad guy, but it's not necessarily the bad guy that's doing the right thing.
Yeah.
The thing is, these statutes are constantly changing. You know, the regulations change, and there's an expectation here that you'll have a lot of work if you had this particular position. So how do you keep up with the constant change in regulations and still do your day job, but still at the same time able to grow? That's?
A lot of it is, believe it or not, there is an accounting forum, of which I'm a member of, MMA, MM, MMA, MMAA, I'm sorry, gotta get that out right. And when these laws and regulations do change, everyone kinda gets, someone will just send it out to the group, and there's a lot of discussion going back and forth. How do we handle this? How do we take care of that? What does this do now? Someone may have a different, DOR doesn't know it all. Sometimes we'll call Springfield, get a different answer than what Worcester says. We'll have to call legal in Boston to get a final answer. So there's, there's a lot of, what do you wanna say? Education that way, in addition to going to, you know, I do go to the educational forums that they have at Amherst and, Amherst, the Cape, and there's another one down in Asabet Valley area, I think.
So you would say you understand the process well enough to even question the DOR if, if you had to?
Oh, yeah, and if there's a question that I really don't understand, I'll call a DOR rep and say, help me out, walk me through this, whether it's a director of accounts or, that happens quite a bit. I'll call the DOR rep and get directed directly to the director of accounts.
Okay, thank you.
For a, what do you wanna say? Legal ruling, for lack of a better term?
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Council Smarres. We'll now proceed to Council Blanger, and then myself.
Good evening, Mr. Ferrari.
Good evening.
Thank you for your interest in the city of Lowell, and I welcome you to City Hall. I just wanna, couple things regarding a contract. Just, I don't know if you're aware, this job would be a three-year appointment, and then you would need to get reappointed again in, you know, three years from now. Is that something you're comfortable with going into it?
Yeah, that's, every position I've had thus far, municipal position's been a three-year appointment.
Okay, excellent. Okay, well, I'm at, I'm at the end of the rotation here. My colleagues in front of me continue to ask outstanding questions. But again, it's just, you know, coming from a small, small up city, it's basically the size of the budget here I have concern with, you know, 350 million to 60 million now. And, you know, you're gonna have a staff of roughly a handful of people you're going to be responsible for. How are you going to adapt with this, with this additional staff and much larger sum of money we're dealing with in the city of Lowell?
The money, I, it's more zeros on the end of it, it's just larger numbers. Everything still operates the same. In Gardner, there was one person directly under me, the assistant city auditor. However, it was kind of convoluted because I was responsible for payroll. Payroll resulted in the treasurer's office. That woman directly reported to the treasurer, yet payroll issues she reported to me. So it was managing the functions of different people. I would, on a staff this big, I would encourage, if possible, cross-training. Maybe you know a little bit about that? Just someone to fill in. If someone goes out on a, I don't know, a medical leave for a little while, or they're gone on vacation for, you know, for two weeks, three weeks. When I was in Gardner, the unfortunate part was right after I started, my assistant left. So I got a crash course in Munis in, for five months there. I just kept payroll and bills going on my own, not to mention, you know, my own job. It was, it was a crash course. I wish, I wish we could have, could've had a couple more people.
Okay, well, you're certain you would potentially have that here in the city. So getting back to Munis now, is that, would you consider yourself experienced enough dealing with these, with Munis to deal with these numbers?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, this, you know, I'll be honest, the first four months were, wow. Now it's, I'm at the point where, there, there's little secrets in Munis that I didn't know about. You can use a greater than or a less than sign in Munis to run a report. Ooh, surprise, it makes it a heck of a lot easier than downloading things to Excel, Munis does give you that opportunity, I'm real comfortable with Excel. But as far as running reports in Munis, or understanding Munis, or how the funds are set up in Munis with the revenue and the expenditures, and the salary and wages and the other, and the personal services, and that's, it's, I, yes, I know it.
So you answered, yes, okay, okay, thank you, I, well, one more, it was asked earlier. Now Lowell has a lot of collective bargain agreements with several unions, cost of living raises, whatnot, that, what, in a case of a collecting bargain agreement that you may have a good interpretation of, what would you do if you're in a position where you may be looking at, again, everything's done before you, how are you going to handle a situation where you may not have an answer, I guess, if you will, on some of these collective bargaining agreements?
You know, with, with the mayor's approval and city council approval, I'd like to contact labor attorney. You know, I, I'm not an expert in it. You know, I, I do know what does, I mean, the basis of, you know, the, at a grand scale, what it grants, maybe it's a two, three percent increase, you know, health insurance, things like that, but if there's an interpretation on it, I'm, I would have to go to legal counsel and get a ruling on it.
Okay, well, it's very good, 'cause we, we do have a legal department here in the city, as a department, and sort of frown upon outside counsel, I mean, when absolutely necessary, but we like to avoid that, but no, that's, that's what I was looking to hear, that, you know, you'll get an answer, if you don't know, you'll contact the right people who do. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor, welcome, Mr. Ferrari. Sorry, I'm, I'm the next in line alphabetically, so. Sorry for the confusion. So can you tell me what would be some of your strengths to this, that you would bring to this position and to the city?
I'm extremely analytical, and if I, I, I wanna know not just numbers, I, I, you know, crossword puzzles, things like that, I'm, I, I love that type of stuff, I love, if I'm a penny or two off, it drives me nuts. Excel sometimes, if you don't format something right, it rounds up or down a couple of pennies because you're carrying it out four decimal places, that drives me nuts. I, I wanna find out where I'm off, I wanna be able to justify, if you can say justify being off, why is it off, I'm extremely analytical. Like I said earlier, I can meet and talk to anybody, any given time about pretty much any subject. I may not know what I'm talking about, but I can at least talk to him.
Okay, thank you. So can you just explain a little bit on your resume, I see you're in Pepperell from 2011 to 2014, and then you went to Gardner, and at the same time, you held position in Royalston?
Yes, like I said.
One of them part, was Gardner part-time, or?
No, Gardner was full-time, like I said, Royalston was, Royalston has four full-time employees. There's, everything in Royalston is strictly part-time, there's part, everybody is part-time, with the exception of the four DPW employees. It was, they were looking for an accountant when I was in Athol, I said, seven miles away, what the heck? And it was, it's strictly nights at home, logged, I, you know, I can go up there, I can log in from home, it's strictly weekends and nights, if it means getting rid of Royalston, hey, Royalston doesn't pay the bills, so.
Okay, but your, your background's not in accounting, it's business administration, a master's in business administration. I didn't see a certification on any of you for, to become a, I know in the private sector, it's a CPA, but in the, in the government sector, it's a, it's a CGA.
Right.
Are you a member of the Mass Association of Accountants?
I am a member, I sat for the exam once, I have not sat for it since. I would, it's not a problem, it's in, to sit for it and, you know, take the exam is not a big deal.
Did you sit for the practical or the legal, or both?
Both.
You sat for both?
Yeah, and I missed legal by one question, drives me nuts, but.
Okay. Okay, is that something you would consider getting, 'cause it's pretty, I see you've been in, you've been in the municipal side for, well, even Athol back to twenty, twenty thousand, two thousand and two. What was your thought on, when you were in Athol, you still live in Athol, just moving up, moving up to Pepperell?
Athol is not a thriving metropolis by any stretch of the imagination. I mean, the biggest thing we got going now is we just got a Market Basket in town. I'm sure Market Basket is kinda headquartered up here, so I'm sure you're familiar with the legal fights they had, but that's the biggest thing to come to Athol in God knows how long.
That's a good thing that it's come to Athol, by the way, okay.
Yeah, well, I've got personal issues with it because it's almost right across the, I, you know, I bought a nice house, built a nice house on a quiet street, now I got to come down to a blinking red light, cars flying through it to get to Market Basket, it's, it's a personal issue, but.
Oh, it's fine, I just wanna touch on the management letter, I mean, each organization, each entity you work for required by law to do an audit, your last management letter, findings, carryovers, can you explain a little bit?
I can't, Gardner, we have not got that management letter yet. Simply because when I started in Gardner, excuse me, like I said, my assistant left, the auditor that was doing the outside audit prior to my getting there actually gotten a pretty serious bicycle accident. He had planned on doing the audit, everything was all set, the end of February, end of February, he informed the mayor that, oh, I'm not gonna do your audit now.
So can I ask you, are you talking about 2014 or 2015? Because you.
Twenty.
Fourteen?
Four, I'm trying to think.
Cause twenty, twenty fifteen, they should be just doing their field interviews right now.
Yeah, 2014, the audit is not even completed in Gardner because he got hit by the bus slash truck. I was informed at that point, go out and find another audit firm, we, I contacted Melanson Heath, out of, I'm familiar with them.
Okay.
They, they're still finishing up the field work, actually, we had to fit them in the best we could.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Frye, for expressing interest in the city, appreciate it, thank you, we'll move on to Councilor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Ferrari, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing okay, I, I noticed on your resume that you are an official for baseball, football, and basketball. How much time does that take for you?
Again, most of it's after hours, it depends on the number of games you get. Football is Friday night, usually.
High school, high school?
High school football, yeah, high school basketball is night, seven o'clock games usually, baseball, unless you get a night game, it's in the afternoon, that would have to go by the wayside. It was convenient in Athol, I was there, you know, but that would, baseball slash softball would, it's, it's impossible to do that with such a distance, you know, up here, but football and basketball occur at night, there would be no JV games and junior varsity games in football, those occur in the afternoon. Those, but if it mean, again, I enjoy it, I like it, but again, it doesn't pay the bills, so.
Okay, how long have you been doing that?
Oh, God, football, six years, basketball, six years, seven years, baseball, God, since my son was involved in Little League, and he's twenty-seven now, so. Been doing baseball for quite a few years.
Okay, and you said Gardner used Munis, right?
Yes.
But in Royalston, they, they don't?
Royalston, like I said, was part-time, they used a, a system called City and Town that was designed by an accountant that was kinda doing the books. He left to go teach, I think, so I installed Vadar in Royalston, and Athol uses Vadar. Pepperell used a system called Admins. There's, oh, okay.
So only Gardner uses Munis?
Yes.
Is that right, okay, and in Royalston, you said there's only four full-time employees?
Yes.
So what do they use, they have a, is it a volunteer fire department there?
Call fire, call police, everyone else is, you know, like I said, part-time, part-time assessor, part-time accountant, part-time treasurer.
So how does the police work, is it, is it like a regional type of thing, or is it, you don't have a volunteer police department, do you?
Pretty much, it's, well, they're scheduled, but no one has regular scheduled hours. Most of these, some work in Phillipston, some have part-time jobs elsewhere, they fill in.
Okay.
Royalston is, you know, the one, one point six million dollar budget, we probably got four hundred people and seven hundred cows, there's, trust me, there's nothing going on in Royalston.
Okay. You, when, you were in Gardner, starting in February of fourteen?
Yes.
And I'm assuming that you got a three-year appointment there?
Yes.
But you only lasted, you only stayed for about a year and a half?
Yeah.
And you, you left just recently?
Yeah, just the end of September.
Okay, and the reason was because you didn't get along with some of the city councils?
I'm not gonna say didn't get along with them, I got along with most of the city councilors, it was just the turmoil within Gardner, like I said, we had three of them that are suing the city.
Three city councils?
Yeah.
Suing the city of Gardner?
Three were suing the city, the, we've got two that want to run for mayor, and it was just that kind of turmoil combined with what was going on at home at the time, I just said, I gotta get out, it, it wasn't fun going to work anymore, let's put it that way.
Maybe I misunderstood you, but at the very beginning, I thought that you said that there were nine or eleven city councils.
Yeah.
Well, was there, are there nine, or, I mean, you must know how many city councils there are in Gardner, right?
I'm trying to, let me, there are nine city councils in Gardner.
Okay. And so, did you see your job, you worked directly for the city council then?
Yes.
You did not work for the mayor?
No.
Okay, and yet, it, it seemed that in some of your remarks, that you, you made it seem like you were working with the mayor and the city council.
Yeah, it's, it was kinda dotted line, the mayor with day-to-day operations, like I said, the mayor is, he was extremely knowledgeable. In Gardner, I only interacted with three or four people, three people on the finance committee. I didn't really interact with the other seven, six members of city council, I mean, there were a couple, three of them. Other than meeting them for my appointment, I never saw them again, there were.
You weren't required to go to the city council meetings?
On occasion, I was, and I went to two or, I, I've only went to three of them, actually, I wasn't required to go. I was asked to go to finance committee meetings, again, it's just the finance committee, it's not the entire city council.
Okay.
And there were just three of them.
And you said there was one person that worked, there was one person that, that worked under you?
Yes.
Like that was a shared position, it sounds like, right?
No, she worked directly for me, there was another person that worked directly for the treasurer, that was kind of a shared position when it came to payroll, with me. So I had one direct report in my office with me.
Okay, and so if you were successful in, in getting this position, I'm assuming that you'd be able to start right away?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'd, you know, give me, give me a couple of days and I'll be here.
And you've given a lot of thought to the commute and, and how long that's gonna take, and, you know, back and forth?
Yeah, it really, either my, I drove to Andover, Athol's not a thriving metropolis, I know where I'm, I, I know I'm gonna have to drive.
You know that sometimes, maybe on Tuesdays, you would be here for, say, nine o'clock in the morning?
Yeah.
And that there would be a city council meeting that may go till ten o'clock?
At Pepperell, we had finance committee meetings that I was required to go to that didn't get out until midnight, twelve-thirty AM.
Right, but Pepperell's a lot closer to your house than Lowell.
Not really, believe it or not, it took me an hour to get here, it took me an hour and five minutes to get to Pepperell. There's no easy way to get to Pepperell, I mean, I hit Fitchburg, and then it's, I, do I go up through Shirley? There's no easy direct route, it's actually five minutes longer, distance-wise, it's shorter, it's forty-one miles, but it's actually five miles longer because I'm on back roads.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. A lot of questions have been asked and answered, so my question would be, why Lowell, what intrigues you about Lowell?
I just feel it's the next, the next step, I've gone from Athol, a, you know, fifteen million dollar budget, sixteen million dollar budget, to Pepperell that had a twenty million dollar budget, but it was much more, I'm gonna say affluent. The average house value in Athol is like a hundred and seven thousand dollars, in Pepperell, it's two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Much more affluent. Gardner was simply a, a city, a much different, much different, I'll be honest, that took me some time to understand the city council form of government as opposed to a town manager slash town administrator and a board of selectmen, to understand the city council form of government. And I just figure that Lowell is a, a next progressive step, I'm not going anywhere in, you know, I've got ten, fifteen years left, unless I hit the lottery, and I don't buy tickets, so, I guess I'm not gonna hit the lottery, so I'm here for the next fifteen years.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Leahy, Councilor Martin?
Thank you, I, I know most of my colleagues have talked to you at length about your experience in municipal finance, and I appreciate your answers, and will consider them carefully, so thanks for coming here tonight.
Not a problem.
I, I guess I would have viewed the refereeing experience as maybe helpful to you dealing with the Gardner City Council, but apparently not so much.
I...
You don't have to answer if you don't.
Believe it or not, coaches don't know what they think they know.
So I guess that, I, what I'd like to hear a little bit about is how you've managed subordinates, what's, what's your background there, you said there was only one assistant in most of these municipal positions, but you did have a prior career at Digital, I actually worked there too. Was that a bigger staff, what, how much, what's your experience managing people, let me ask you that?
Digital slash Compaq slash Hewlett Packard is not a good end. Digital slash Compaq slash Hewlett Packard is not, uh, a good indicator, I had, I reported four different ways, uh, I had a couple of people under me, uh, but sometimes I was operation, then they change your job code, and the next thing, I'm finance, then they change you again, you're back to operations, um, a prior life, I worked for a company, Wedderall Food Distribution, it's now owned by Super Value Foods, it was, um, grocery distribution is what it was, um, we distributed the groceries to local IGAs in the area, um, we did the profit and loss, we did the gross profit, the, the margins for the grocery stores, uh, it's kinda interesting how they, uh, where they put things in a grocery store, but regardless, I had seven people reporting to me at that point, um, they would, you know, again, it's financial, they would pay the bills, uh, do, each, each employee had a different IGA, um, and they would, uh, pay the bills, do that stuff, bring them up to me for approval, um, I would consolidate things, do the financials, but at that point, I had, uh, seven people reporting to me.
So that's similar in size to the staff here, I mean, I think, you know, most of the applicants for this job are gonna be people from smaller communities that don't have significant staffs, you know, I think probably most of the applicants are capable, um, financial managers, but in a city like this, you're not gonna be able to do it all yourself, you're gonna have to be relying on other people and making sure they do their job, which is a little bit different than knowing your job.
That was the, that was one of the hardest things to let go of, um, not only knowing the nuts and bolts, but then graduating beyond that and letting them do the nuts and bolts, uh, it was, I, I'm gonna admit it, it was, it was tough, um, because I had set things up a certain way, and that's how I wanted to do it, and that's how I wanted to be done, I'm more of, um, I wanna say hands-off now, um, you're a big boy, you're a big girl, you've got your way of doing things, if it's the correct way, I'm gonna look it over, if it's the correct way, then go right ahead and do it, um, I'm not gonna meddle, I would did, I do wanna know what they do and how they do it, but, uh, I'm not gonna meddle, I'm a big proponent, if it's possible, with, uh, the collective bargaining agreements of cross-training a little bit, um, so someone can at least get by if, you know, two or three people are out or something, um, I wanna know enough so I can get in there and then, you know, maybe it means I gotta handle it for a week, um, I'm not gonna be the expert on it, but if it means I gotta get in there and do it, hey, I'm gonna roll up my sleeves and do it.
You, you feel confident you could manage the staff to, to perform?
Oh, yeah.
In a way we need it?
No question.
Okay, all right, thanks very much.
Uh, thank you, Council, so, Mr. Frye, that concludes the question and answer period with members of the council, and you are more than welcome to, um, provide, uh, closing remarks, if you'd like.
Um, before I say any, was there anything, anyone have any other questions that I might have missed, uh, you wanna elaborate on, uh, anything?
No, I think we're good.
Then, like I said, I'm, I'm not going anywhere, I'm here for the duration, uh, like I, and unless I hit the lottery and I don't buy tickets, I'm here for the next 15 years, uh, I'm not going anywhere, um, I, I don't, I, I can pretty much start as soon as you need somebody, I think my background with Munis, um, is a benefit where I could, uh, I mean, the, the numbering, the Department of Revenue numbering is a, four is a revenue, five is an expense, uh, Department 135 is accounting, 141 is assess, that, that's always gonna be the same, that's not gonna change, um, the Munis part of it, uh, I got my feet wet in Gardner, I think it's, uh, people don't realize how complex Munis really is, uh, oh, it's just a finance, financial software package, yeah, yeah, it's much more than that, um, I think I got my feet wet there, I think it's a matter of just, it's more hitting the ground running, um, and as far as, uh, you know, I, I report to you, city council, um, please don't take this the wrong way, Mr. Mayor, but mayors change every two years, they may change every two years, um, dotted line, day-to-day operation, I have no problem working with the mayor, but I, city council, you guys set direction, I, uh, the laws are there in black and white, um, and if you want another enterprise fund and it's voted, we set up another enterprise fund, um, I may have my reasons why and why not, and I'll tell you why, but I may not agree with it, but I've gotta do it, so, that's pretty much it, um, you know, what you see is what you get, I don't know what else to say.
Okay, well, again, we thank you for your, uh, for your interest, pardon me, and thank you for coming to, this evening and, um, and answering our questions for us.
Okay, thank you. Now, now you guys embarrassed me, I'm sorry.
and, um, without any further ado, we, we invite you to make an opening statement, and then we'll proceed with, uh, questions from individual members of the city council, and then you, uh, if you'd like, you're more than welcome to make a closing statement. So, welcome to City Hall, and, um, and we can proceed, Ms. Legrand.
Okay, so I start first? Okay, um, the reason why I actually applied for the position was I was looking for a challenging role, but a larger environment than the Town of Orange, um, I ended in Orange in July of this year, um, they have a population of less than 10,000, um, I spoke to my DOR rep, and he had said to, you know, kinda shop around and look for a larger area that you can actually use your expertise, um, education, and what you've learned at like the accountant, municipal, um, accountant, uh, school, so, so this kind of, um, the reason why I applied here, it, like I said, it was a larger area, um, the details of the job, um, basically the same of what I was doing, so there's really not much difference there, with like the end of the year and that type of thing, um, they have the same auditor firm that I had over in Orange, so that was kind of a perk, 'cause I kinda know how they work, um, and also because I figured that it would give me a lot more experience in the municipal accounting, plus have, um, a little bit behind me to get more training that Orange could not provide.
Great.
Okay, I guess we'll begin with Council Melonazo.
Thank you, thank you, Council Blandit, good evening, Ms. Legrand, thank you for being here, and thank you for your interest in the position, um, are you familiar with the Munis financial system?
Um, I have heard of it, a lot of the accountants at school used it, but we use Vadar.
Okay.
We had a very archaic accounting system, so in July of 14, I updated the accounting system to Vadar, because the rest of the town used it as well, so it made sense to streamline our work and be all on the same system, so...
Okay, you feel like you could get up to speed with, we use a Munis system, and it's, um, uh, you know, whatever the version is we're using now, I know it's quite a complicated system, are you comfortable being...
Yeah, there's been a lot of positions that I've had that I actually was like thrown in with no training whatsoever on the software, so I'm pretty, um, suave with technical, reading the manuals, um, you know, looking for resources, there's a lot of software programs that have YouTube videos on how-tos, and that's basically what I do, is a lot of internet research on different types of things, um, when I struggled in Orange, when I first took the position, there was no one in there to train me, um, and so I kinda went to the online to find out more about municipal accounting, 'cause I had no municipal accounting experience whatsoever when I went there, so...
Okay, what's the, uh, what's the size of the budget in Orange?
It, what was it?
The, the budget, what's the size?
It was 18 million.
18 million, okay, okay, and you know, we probably went on the website and looked at our budget here, it's 315, yeah.
Yes, I did read your financials.
Right, right.
Significantly a larger amount of budget.
But you mentioned that we, um, Orange is the same outside firm that the City of Lowell uses, okay?
Yes.
Okay, okay, um, are you familiar with the various federal and state programs that the city, uh, is involved in, um, and the fact that the auditor's office would be tracking those programs as well?
I, I didn't hear the question, the first part.
Did you do any of that, and Orange track, uh, federal or state grant programs?
Yes.
That, you did, okay, okay.
Yes, yeah, we had a spreadsheet, um, template that we did every year and submitted it to the auditor, so they could do an A133.
Okay, um, just an estimate, how many chart of accounts did you have in Orange?
Too many.
Too many.
We had way more than what we actually needed, for that small of a town.
That seems to be the answer, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of, um, a lot of the previous accountants, they just, it just kept growing, you know what I mean, when we created Vadar, we did get rid of, and we did convent, condense a lot, um, in the chart of accounts, 'cause we had kind of just, it just was like out of control.
Okay.
So, and a lot of things were out of order, so, of where they should be.
Now, did you process payroll in Orange as well?
Um, what, in Orange, um, the, the treasurer's office did the payroll, um, what I did was I basically got the payroll first, and I created a spreadsheet in Excel with everybody's department, um, codes, GL codes, and then I went through their timesheets and had my own to, when they gave me that file back, to compare, to make sure that it was accurate.
Okay.
Before it was uploaded.
Okay, thank you, um, one last question, I seen your cover email, um, to the HR department, that you're planning to sit for the CPA exam in 2016, is that something you're still doing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just a personal goal, 'cause I started so, you know, into the accounting and that stuff.
Right.
And like I said, municipal, I just kinda fell into it.
Okay.
And, um, so I kinda wanna finish that goal too, so...
Great, well, congratulations, okay, thank you, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Council, Council Rock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, good evening to the Grand, thanks for coming in tonight, um, how is your, uh, relationship with the Orange administration?
Um, the town administrator and I are still on speaking terms, um, I kind of had a little bit of, um, a lot of resistance, that's basically why I chose to leave Orange after two and a half years, is that everything I learned in accounting school, when I tried to implement it, I re, I had a lot of resistance amongst the people that have been there for 20, 30 years, so after struggling with that, I decided that I would look elsewhere, so it was like a fit issue.
Sure, so were you part of the finance team in Orange?
Um, yes, yes, it was myself, the town administrator at first, and then when we hired a new treasurer, they had put her as a finance director.
So, again, with this position here in Lowell, you worked for the council, uh, but at the same time, you know, hopeful to, to fit in with the overall finance team in Lowell?
Yes.
How could you do both at the same time?
Yes.
How, you know, what, what experiences or qualities did you use to do both?
Um, in my other positions that I've had, I've always been in part of the accounting management, basically, I met with the board of directors, the executive directors, um, we worked as a team on the budgets, um, monitoring the expenditures and getting this, the, you know, sign-offs on everything, um, I've always been in, um, cahoots with that type of thing, so, uh, it's never been just that, I'm like a accounting clerk type of person, I've pretty much made a lot of the decisions in the accounting department and changes.
Okay, great, uh, so while you were in Orange, did you work directly with the Department of Revenue, or did you have a contact person that you worked with there?
Yes, yes.
So, your, your position there, you took care of like the, the EN reports and the tax rate and things like that?
Yes, yes, I had my own DOR rep that I had reached out to, um, and we had a schedule for the Schedule A, for our combined balance sheet, um, the recap itself, to do the tax rate setting and that type of thing, so...
Right, and now, one more question, so in your time as, uh, in, in Orange, were there any, you know, discrepancies that you found within either reports or budgets that you had to conduct an investigation or call a question?
Um, not too much, I mean, there was one that I questioned buying 15 pairs of underwear, I thought was a little excessive when I first started there, you know, with school, they said to look for certain expenditures and that type of thing, and when that came across my desk, I was like, you know, that's, that's kind of excessive to replace 15 pairs of underwear, and then the union kinda shot it down, so...
And if you did, you're kind of Lowell, you did find a discrepancy or something that was wrong with the, with the books, how would you address that?
Um, well, I kinda would bring it to the administrator in Orange, the town administrator, that's who I would bring everything to, um, because she was my point person, so, um, when I, I was out on leave in December, and the interim accountant and the finance director had left 130,000 dollars in, um, inflated revenue in the DOR reporting, and when I came back, I noticed it, and so I fixed it with the auditors, and I made DOR aware of the mistake.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All set, thank you, Council, we'll go to Council Samaras.
Thank you, Ms. Legrand, for coming here for the interviews.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go along the same way, but let me start with this, how would you basically describe your ability to work in other departments, knowing that you're coming to, I mean, this is a large city, I mean, not in comparison to Boston, but, uh, it's, uh, we're up there, and your requ, your job basically requires you to be independent, but at the same time, we're asking of our people to be collaborative with other department heads, so how do you see being an independent person and still being collaborative to work with, you know, hu, human resources, or to work with the garage, you know, or the police department, or fire department?
Um, well, I know Orange was smaller, but I actually had interaction with every single department that we had, um, I also had a accounting clerk that I was responsible for, I was responsible for anything that had to do with the finance, so that was the collector, the treasurer's office, the assessor's office, um, anything that hit the GL was my responsibility, so it included everything that the departments had done, um, for money coming in, expenditures going out, um, I've always been a team player, but I've also, also been able to manage as a management person as well, um, I believe that the staff under me, the more I mentor them, the more they learn, and the more that they actually help me do my job easier, because they have a little bit more ability to take on different types of roles that they're willing to take, um, and with working with the different departments, um, you know, it's, it's just part of the job, it's, you know, I mean, you have your own tasks, you have your own, um, you know, like, items that you need to get done, but to also stop what you're doing and helping someone that walked into my door was everything that I, that's always what I've always done, um, if I had a department head that had a question about a bill or something, they would just come to my doorway, I, I had an open-door policy, so, I was not open to the public, um, but except for appointments and that stuff, but anybody in the town hall and within the town departments, I was always open for anything that they needed me for.
Okay, you've touched upon a lot of what I wanna ask, an auditor, in a sense, has to be the bad guy, though, because you represent the, the city council, and we're gonna hire you to ensure that whatever happens regarding the books is done properly, now, you could have a, well-respected department head that, uh, just does not wanna change, you find something that really does not allow your systems to work the way they should, and this person's reluctant to change, how would you, how would you deal with that person?
Um, I would try to settle it amongst ours, ourselves, but if I can't, then I would imagine you have like a human resource or something that you could do as a, you know, like a party that's not involved in the situation, um, I would imagine that an employee would have certain guidelines that they have to go by, if they're not doing their job, then, you know, I mean, we had write-up systems that if they were, you know, insubordinate or something like that, then they were written up, or we would have executive sessions, um, to discuss anything that had to do with complaints, and, um, we also had, if it was performance issues, then we went and, on the select floor and discussed it.
All right, if, if you found a, a certain department head doing something that was basically illegal, and you know it, it's not, maybe this is something for discussion, then how do you handle that?
Well, if they submitted a bill, if they submitted a bill that was not legal, then it would not be paid, um, I've ran into that, where, you know, they didn't get approval, they were trying to pay a prior year bill without going to town meeting and getting it approved again, and that was a no-go, we just held it, um, and then we went and brought it to the town meeting in order for it to go on to a previous bill, um, authorization to be paid.
I'll, I'll go beyond that one bill that could be something that could be a misunderstanding, but you note that there's an obvious... but you note that there's an obvious, uh, desire to go around something and do it illegally anyways. How would you stop it?
Um, in regards to not billing or just running, if they're running money?
My building, the person's, the department's not being run properly, what they're doing is illegal, and you found it that way, and...
That would have to be escalated. That would have to be escalated as far as it can go within the, you know, management team, basically. I mean, town administrator, mayor, um, the council itself, it would have to be totally brought to well higher than me (laugh) in order for, you know, to have enough. Bring in the auditors. If it's something that has to do with financial, bring in your external auditors to discuss it with the council of why it's not allowed. Um, you have the law books, MGLs and that stuff as a backup to prove that this is not allowed and that, you know, they can lose their job.
I mean, that's, that's the point. You have some people that wanna keep a, we'll say, an older system. If you saw that it didn't, uh, encumber what you're trying to do, would you let it go, or would you insist on changing it?
Well, that's why I left Orange. (laugh) Well, because, I mean, I found that it was like old school. They didn't want change. They didn't want to do things that I have learned from a fresh point of view of what was right and wrong on the laws, and that's one of the reasons why that I chose not to stay there, is that I wanted...
Okay, so two things, right and wrong in the law, or ac, actually the system is better, would save the, the city money? Do you know what I'm saying? There are different ways of doing things.
Yes, yes. Well, I mean, to save, to save a city money and go around the law is still, it's illegal. You know, I mean...
No, my point, my point is, you're willing to make the tough decision if someone's not doing it right, but if someone's doing something and it's right, but it's just not cost-effective, you would still push to make sure they do something cost-effective.
Correct, yes. Um, yeah, definitely.
You don't see my point?
Yeah, I do see your point, yeah, I do. Yeah, I've had that before where, you know, um, they have a vendor that they've always done business with, and you know that there's like, you know, with the internet, there's so many different things that you can do to save money. And that's always been one of my irks is that they just don't, that they're just stuck in their ways, and then they kinda have to be shaken up a little bit.
Okay. Your knowledge of Chapter forty-four, general finance statutes, Department of Revenue guidelines, are you acquainted with?
Yes.
Okay. The thing is, with these guidelines though, they're under constant change. Statues change, regulations change, while you're expected to do your full-time job. How do you keep up with dealing with regulation change and law changes?
Um, when I was at Orange, we got emails on any type of changes that were instituted so that we were aware of them. DOR would send out emails of newsletters or different types of things. At school every year, we discussed new stuff that was on their docket type of thing, of what they were looking into, um, and, you know, just basic, the, the news itself is coming from DOR if there's any changes within the finance laws.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to now proceed to Councilor Belanger, and then myself, and then down the line. Councilor Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Legrand, I wanna thank you for your interest in the City of Lowell, and welcome to our beautiful Lowell City Council chambers.
Thank you.
Now, how did the, in, in the town of Orange, how did the former government work? Did you work for the selectman, or did you work for the manager, or how did, how did that go?
Um, I was hired from the town manager, and I answered to her on an everyday basis, but the selectman was the one that appointed me.
Okay, they appointed you, right? Yeah, okay, well, it's, uh, you would, uh, you answered to, you would be potentially answering to the city council if, if hired, uh, and this is, are you comfortable with no contract? This is a three-year appointment, and you need to get reappointed again in three years. Is that something you're comfortable with?
Yeah, that's what I had in Orange as well, yeah. We didn't have contracts.
Okay. Well, Dolly, my concern is, um, you know, the sheer, the sheer size of the numbers here, coming from a very small community, and the budget here in Lowell's, uh, many, many times, what you've been dealing with's up, and enabled a three hundred and fifty million dollars. Um, are you intimidated by these sheer numbers? And, I mean, you're gonna have a handful of staff that you're responsible for as well. Uh, is that in your comfort zone? Are you, are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the way I look at it with accounting, it doesn't matter how large the number is, the, the way to do the work is the same. It's, you know, you're still monitoring the expenditures on the various different funds, um, and the line items, and it's pretty much the same no matter if it's a small amount or a large amount. Um, you know, you just gotta stay within what you have for a budget, so you don't go over, so.
That is correct. All right. Um, okay, now how about, uh, dealing with collective bargaining agreements in Orange? You have any experience with that, dealing with...
I did not have any, anything at all to do with that.
No?
That was the town administrator, and the legal department, and the selectman.
Okay. So, no experience with dealing, okay.
No.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Um, thank you, Council. Um, good evening, and, and thank you for applying.
Thank you.
So, just talk about the management letter a little bit. Um, the latest management letter that you, uh, went through or, um, experienced, what was, um, was the process? Findings, carryovers from, uh, from prior years? Uh, any, can you, can you just discuss?
And for you, when I read it from, from the town, from the City of Lowell?
Not, not from Lowell, from, from when, your time in Orange?
Oh, in my town in Orange. Um, oh, the only thing that was basically on the management letter that consistently was on there was the OPEB not being, um, funded, and also, um, the reconciliations between the treasurer and accountant.
Ah, okay. That's a, it seems to be a, I don't...
Common?
A common, uh, challenge. We certainly had that here. How was it, um, how was it corrected? How did you, or, or did it continue?
It, it kinda continued, and that was one of the reasons that I decided that I didn't wanna stay in Orange, was that the more that I was saying I was balanced to what she gave me.
Right.
Um, they were like, you're not balanced. And I'm like, but I balanced to her number, and this is what she gave me. But her number was a moving target, and I had a problem with that, because the way I look at it, treasurer has cash. The accountant does not deal with cash.
Right.
And if the cash is not balanced, and she's giving me figures that are changing daily or monthly or weekly, or after I've reconciled and I get something from that previous month, that concerns me.
Okay. So, a, as you mentioned, there's town manager, correct?
The town, the town administrator?
Town administrator, okay. What was the, um, what was the sort of resolve on how to bring closure to this finding on a, on a regular basis?
There really wasn't, and again, that's why I left, is because she did not answer to the town administrator. She answered to the selectman.
I see.
And that left me with no recourse.
Okay. Um, so what was variant, was it a significant variance when, um, that was carried from year to year on that reconciliation, or was it just...
Um, it wasn't when I left. We pretty much hammered out quite a bit of it. It, it got to the point where it was just mistakes.
Right.
Either it was recorded warrants that were duplicated, or cash that was supposed to be on there from the bank that wasn't in our accounting software.
Okay.
The, um, treasurer's office put the cash into the VEDAR accounting system, and then I would hit post once I verified that they were going into the correct GL accounts.
All right. How many, um, Schedule As, you were there for two and a half years, so did you want two, two Schedule As, recap sheets?
What was that?
Schedule A to Department of Revenue? Were you responsible for that?
Yes.
With the assessors?
Yes, yes. I did two, two years.
Recap sheets as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, Athol is a little bit of a ride from here. Um, would you consider moving to Lowell?
An hour and ten minutes.
An hour and ten minutes?
Yeah.
Um, would you consider moving to Lowell?
No. My husband and I live, um, on a two hundred and fifty acre farm.
Farm?
Yes, farm.
Okay.
Back to eighteen hundreds, and it's been in his family, so.
Ah, I see, okay. Um, so you're also, do you, have you ever sat on a retirement board? A member of the retirement board, because in Lowell, uh, the auditor is also a member of the retirement board.
The time report?
Retirement?
Oh, retirement.
Lowell has a retirement board.
Um, no, the accountant didn't have anything to do with that either. That was the treasurer's office that did that in Orange.
All right, great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
No problem.
Councilor Kennedy?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Legrand, welcome to Lowell. Um, I, I just have a couple of questions. I think, uh, you've gotten a lot of the, a lot of the questions, but, um, could you just explain, I, I got, I got a little bit confused. You were hired by the town administrator?
Yes.
Okay, and so you worked direct, he was, you reported directly to the town administrator?
Yes.
Not to the board of selectmen?
Correct.
Okay. Did you interact much with the board of selectmen?
Yes, when they had the meetings and I was on the agenda to discuss financials, um, updates on our finance situation, anything that had to do with the software implementation and that type of thing, to keep them all up to date.
Okay, and then the tre, is it the treasurer?
Yes.
Or the, was, was appointed directly by the board of selectmen?
Yes.
Okay, and is that why you left, because of your relationship with the treasurer? Is that...
Yes, it was a conflict between the two of us. They had her as the finance director, and I felt that as the accountant, and she has no accounting experience, she left an error in my financials while I was out on leave, um, and she refused to make changes. When I asked her to make changes, she asked me to just come in and approve it and get it over with and move forward.
Okay. What did the town administrator think about that?
The town administrator was pretty much on my side, but she really couldn't say anything because this town, the treasurer did not report to her. She reported directly to the chair of the select board.
But so did the town administrator?
Yes. And she just, she, she had said to them that it's not accurate, it needs to be fixed. Nobody, nobody wanted to go through, so I contacted DOR myself and told them about the error so that they were aware of it come when they close, you know, the year.
Okay. The, um, the position that you had in Orange was a three-year appointment?
Yes.
And you stayed there for about two years, a little over two years. Um, this would be a three-year appointment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at, it's a, it's a long drive, and, um, on Tuesdays, you'd be expected to be at the city council meetings.
Mm-hmm.
So, you'd, you would need to be here for, say, nine o'clock, and you may not, not all the time, but there's occasions when the council meetings go until ten o'clock. So, that, that's a long day, and then there would be, then you'd be driving to, um, to that two hundred and fifty acre farm in Athol after that, right?
Yes.
Okay, and you've thought about that, and that seems to be, you, you think that's workable?
Um, yeah, I mean, Orange was only like fifteen minutes away from my house, but I did like fifty, sixty hours a week, so the hours were never a problem itself.
Okay, and you said you were gonna be taking the CPA exam, um, next year?
Yes.
When, when did it, when is that, are there several times when you can take that during the year?
It's four times a year that you have, you have two windows out of the, every, um, every quarter.
And when do you plan to take it?
Not really sure yet. I have, um, studied quite a bit for it and that, and then just getting the actual money to pay for the course itself.
Mm-hmm. Okay, okay, that, I think that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Lee?
Thank you. Uh, welcome.
Thank you.
Um, I gotta be honest, I'm a little concerned with the, with the commute too. Um, I like you, I think you're very confident. Um, I like that you're gonna take the CPA exam. Um, could you just, you don't feel that this will interfere with, uh, with the job here?
No.
The long commute?
It never has. I mean, I started, I started school online in two thousand, and I finally graduated in two thousand and fourteen, um, with my masters, and I did it all while working a full-time job and raising the family. So, the timing thing's never been a problem with prioritizing. Um, my job obviously always came first, um, my education was second, and, you know, I mean, you know, lack of sleep a little bit here and there, trying to get dawn and that stuff. But now, um, you know, I, I have time on the weekends with my family, and I work Monday through Friday, so I've never really had a problem with the, you know, doing that. And the commute, on bad days, I would just get a hotel. (laugh) So, um, you know, and like I said, it's only an hour and fifteen minutes. Any other job I ever had, I traveled. Orange was a perk to be so close to home. I've never been that close to home, um, between the Athol, Orange. Um, I've always driven like Auburn, Marlborough area, so, um, the commuting, I mean, I've even applied as far as Boston, so.
Okay. Thank you for coming up.
Problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Martin?
Thanks, welcome, and, and thanks for being here. Um, I just wanted to follow up on a few things you said earlier about supervising staff. You had talked about, um, trying to act as a mentor and bring people along. Um, you did highlight in your resume where you had direct reports. I once wondered if you could just, this seems like it would be a bigger staff than you've ever had to manage before, but what you, you seem, uh, eager to do that, so if you could just comment on what your sort of management techniques with supervising the staff, if you, what you see as challenges, what you see in your experience that would help you?
Okay. Um, well, when I went into TransCore as the accounting supervisor, I had three direct reports, and, um, they were pretty beaten up when I got there. Um, they had, um, you know, nobody empowered them to do anything. They had their own little task that they did, and I found that there were no cross-training. They only did what they knew. So, that was the first thing that I implemented was cross-training to kinda, you know, make sure that everybody knew everybody else's job. And then, you know, I hit resistance, and I pulled in the accounting manager, you know, and we had a meeting, and I basically had said, you know, I know I'm new here and that stuff. I set a chain of, chain of command. Um, you know, I said, I don't wanna ever come into my job and find out my boss is yelling at me for something that I did, that I didn't take care of, that I didn't know nothing about, you know, that you complained about or something like that. So, we set a chain of command. Um, I've always been the type of manager that, um, I don't mind if the employees have fun as long as the job gets done. They know what their job tasks are, um, if it's to take them aside, to mentor them, to, if they're doing it wrong, not just let it slide and keep fixing it under the, you know, under the radar type of thing, but to sit down with them and help them. Um, I had a position that I was in charge of, um, that we had hired someone without Excel experience, and I sat with her month after month, training her, and she finally was like, I can't do this, and she ended up finding a different job. Um, so I've had different positions where, you know, they needed me, but then there, there's been some times that the employees didn't want me, you know, and so you have to kinda bridge that too, where they're resented. You know, I had one that was resentment because she wanted that position that I got, you know, so I mean, (laugh) so that was kind of a challenge, you know, and I just worked through it. You know, I tried to teach her, uh, you know, I tried to treat her like anybody else on the team, and it was her decision in the end that she was gonna leave because she just couldn't deal with it. She couldn't work with me. So, I've had that as well. Um, but a lot of times, I've gotten a great team out of, you know, helping people and teaching them, you know, a lot of the accounting that they might not have even had a clue on how to do. Um, in, in Orange, I had a great assistant. She, you know, she was my right arm. She did the warrant, she did, you know, a lot of different things, and I, before I started leaving, she, um, even stepped up to the plate to learn how to do journal entries in the system and that type of thing. So, it was just trying to distribute the jobs amongst my staff to get the work done, you know, and when you have a staff that has specific duties that are part of their job description, if you have an assistant, and you have a payroll assistant, and you have, you know, someone that does the budgets, and someone that does the HR portion of it and all that type of thing, then they all know what they need to be doing. It's just that if you are trained differently from them, is not just come in like a hammer and say, okay, that's all wrong, we're doing it my way. You learn it their way first, and then if that is not the way that you think is more advantageous to get the job in a timely manner or correctly, then you start to slowly make your changes, and you pick 'em wisely.
Okay, that's a thoughtful answer, so thanks, appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor. Uh, Councilor Mercia?
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Legrand. Thank you for coming all, all the way down here. I do have a concern about your commute every day. That's number one with me. But let me see if I can give you an overview as to what I learnt about you. You're going for your CPA, but you don't have one yet, right?
Correct.
You're not a CPA.
That's correct.
You do not have the working knowledge of munis, right?
Correct.
You do not, uh, do retirement reports as our previous auditors all did, so you don't know that either, right?
I do not.
Okay, and as I look at your resume, um, your last job in Orange, two years, your job before that, fourteen months, another job, two years. Um, it seems that you go from job to job. Is there anything consistent that you'd stay? Convince me as to why I should support you.
Okay, on the resume, it looks like I had a lot of jobs, but my last two before Orange were act, actually at the same time. They were two, like, part-time positions that I did one during the day, one during the evening, so it looks like I kinda jumped ship. The only reason why I took Orange was because it was a one position that offered me full-time, and my plan was to stay in Orange. It's close to home, it was like, you fall out your front door, you're there. Um, but like I said, the conflict of personality door, you're there. But like I said, the conflict of personality of people that have been there for 20, 30 years made it extremely difficult and to even think about staying. I am looking for a home that in 10 to 20 years I could retire from, and yes, I've had a lot of different positions, but I've also grown in almost every single position that I've left to go into a different one. Part of the changes was because when I started accounting, I had started at Simplex. They moved to Florida. Their accounting office left. I had no accounting at all to do in that company, so then I switched to a company that my family actually worked at, and so I stayed a couple of years there and then I went to TransCore. The reason why I left TransCore was because I hit like a ceiling. There was no higher position to go to in that department. I was offered a position at a private school as a controller, so I jumped at it. Anybody would when you graduate with your bachelor's going into your masters.
So, so you really can assure me that if we gave you this position, if something opened up in Orange, like the treasurer's position, you wouldn't grab that?
Oh, no, not in a million years. No, not even in Athol. I, I will never, I never thought that taking a position locally would be such a bad idea, and it was.
Can I ask you, do you know, have knowledge of GAAP, the generally accepted accounting principles?
Yes.
Do you, are you familiar with contract implementations?
Yes.
Do you know anything about approval of vendor contracts?
Yes.
What one quality do you bring to this job should you get it?
I think that my best quality is my innovativeness and, and also my ability to be a problem solver. I have always been that person in a company that everybody went to to finish something or get something done, whether it be fix the copier to, you know, learning how to do something in one of the software programs. I've taken a position where they trained me on the software program, yet I came up and I found we, we didn't know how to do something. I researched it. I found how to do it. We did it. It worked. So, I've always had that personality of, you know, being that go-to person within a company, and it's always been, you know, it works for me.
Have you been to Lowell ever before?
I've driven through it, coming home from like college up in New, I went to school in Manchester, so.
So, you never stopped to a restaurant, came to a folk festivals or anything like that?
Nothing. No, no, I have not. In fact, I mean, driving through, I got here a little after four today because I wanted to make sure I was down here on time, and also the parking situation. I didn't know where to park. I kind of looked online and I saw a bunch of garages and that stuff, so.
You have looked at our budget online?
Yes, yes, I did. I looked at your budget, your financials, the SFAS one that they did. I looked at the management letter and also anything that was under the accounting for the two years that were listed.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our questions from the individual members. I don't know if there are any follow-up questions that members may have, and if not, we would invite you to a closing statement.
Okay. I think that, I think that I have a lot to bring to the position. I think that, you know, reading the management letter, there's issues that you've had, but you also had just hired a new treasurer, and I feel that having a new person into a position that has a lot to offer within that position is going to make a stronger finance team amongst the different departments within the city. I do know that the commute seems to be an issue. I just want to assure you that I have always had a commute. It has never been a problem. In fact, I mean, I had a perk in Orange that I worked from home a lot, and it was a perk. I, I wasn't expecting it. It was just something that was offered to me, so obviously I took advantage of it. You know, I was hired with no set schedule whatsoever. I came in and I left whenever I, I came in. By nine in the morning, I was there till 10, 11 o'clock at night. I have always been the type of person that I stay, I do the job, and I leave, and I do not feel that if you're in the middle of reconciling, I've never been one to say, "Oh, it's five o'clock, got to go," you know. It's, I've always gotten myself to a stop point so that when I come back in the morning, I'm not going to scratch my head and go, "Where was I?" you know, and, and have to kind of retrace my steps and start finishing, you know, midway. So, I just want to assure you that the commute is nothing, and I really do feel that I have a lot to offer, the town, you know, the City of Lowell, and, I mean, I know you're big, and that's basically what I'm looking for is to, you know, dig in and, and learn and get somewhere in my career that I've been kind of striving for.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
May I just have one follow-up, and I don't know if this is off the record or not, maybe you don't want to answer or not, but I know you're from Athol and the man that just left before you was from, was from, is from Athol as well. Did you know this man?
I didn't, I don't even know who was here.
That's all right. Thank you.
No problem.
So, well, thank you. On behalf of the council and the city administration, I, I do just have one follow-up. We, you know, by statute, you are hired or by a charter, you work for the city council, and there are, and we want you to be independent. That's, that's, that's why it's set up this way, but it is a team approach, and there are occasions where you, you know, you may have to raise some issues, but, you know, it's also a team approach, and we don't want any compromise on, on being independent. How do you view that?
Well, like I said before, it's like they know your role, and people under you know your role, and when you're dealing with someone that works underneath your direct, I'm sure that, you know, you're going to hit a little resistance, but then again, the way that you treat people is how you build your team. I've always been one that I treat my staff as how I would want to be treated. I, I mean, I, "Good morning, good evening, thank you," you know, at the end of the day, just to say thank you. You know, I have so many people like, "Why are you thanking me?" Because you did work, you know. So, I really feel that, you know, being independent is one thing, but I've also been very much team as well.
Okay. Great. Anything else? Okay, we thank you. We don't know what the process is, but we, you are our last candidate, and then the council will convene at a later time and go through the product deliverer, deliberative process and, and then vote, and we'll be in touch with the human resources.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.